We just want an education. Not voluntary separation.
Oh, okay.
We just want an education. Generation. Not voluntary separation.
Richard Kessler is a rich.
Richard Kessler is a rich.
But we refuse to give an inch.
But we refuse to give an inch.
Richard Kessler is a rich.
Richard Kessler is a rich. But we refuse to give an inch.
Richard Kessler is a rich.
Richard Kessler is a rich.
But we refuse to give an inch.
But we refuse to give an inch.
What do we want?
Stop the cuts. Now!
What do we want?
Stop the cuts.
Hi, just wanted to let you know that my wife is here. Um, I'm.
Shut it down.
She's here?
Shut it down.
The recording is not pretty of the.
Shut it down.
Sounds good, thank you.
And if we don't get it.
Shut it down.
Dick and Joel, you're no good.
Dick and Joel, you're no good.
Treat your students like you should.
Treat your students like you should. Dick and Joel, you're no good.
Treat your staffers like you should.
Treat your staffers like you should.
Dick and Joel, you're no good.
Dick and Joel, you're no good. Treat your teachers like you should. Dick and Joel, you're no good.
My name's Brian.
Treat your students like you should.
So awesome, wonderful, man. What a great job getting.
Dick and Joel, you're no good.
I'm A Y U and I'm also National Councilman.
Okay.
He gets to be someone to watch this for me.
For sure, for sure.
Yeah, and your name is.
I, um, I used to work for U A W in NYU.
Oh, wow, okay. That was a major, that was a major.
I mean, that was huge, dawg. It was, um, it was a moment for.
And I think in my understanding.
We say fight back.
I hope the, um, the R E S is going.
We say fight back. We say fight back. Fight back.
The former.
Fight back. Fight back.
They called them a little bit.
I say stop, just cut, stop, stop, they cut, they cut. Stop, they cut, stop, stop, they cut, they cut. Stop, they cut, stop, stop, 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 they cut. I say stop, they cut, stop, stop, they cut. I say stop, they cut.
What's up, y'all? With A U P T V live from the New School protest.
I say stop, the cuts.
Stop, the cuts.
Say enough is enough.
Enough is enough.
Say stop, the cuts.
Stop, the cuts.
Say enough is enough.
Enough is enough.
Say stop, the cuts.
Stop, the cuts.
Enough is enough.
Enough is enough.
Short on money, high on power.
Short on money, high on power.
I don't trust Joel Towers.
I don't trust Joel Towers.
Short on money, high on power.
Short on money, high on power.
We don't trust Joel Towers.
We don't trust Joel Towers.
What's up, y'all?
Short on money, high on power.
Short on money, high on power.
There's plenty of folks out here protesting what's happening at the New School.
We don't trust Joel Towers.
Um, later, we're gonna have speakers, we're gonna have students. We're gonna have full-time tenured faculty, contingent faculty, and folks are gonna speak.
We don't trust.
So you can hear all those speeches later.
They don't trust Joel Towers.
But it's really going down out here. People find what's happening is unacceptable, and it is unacceptable. And as you can see, nobody's taking that seriously.
N S R doesn't trust Joel Towers.
Parsons doesn't trust Joel Towers.
Parsons doesn't trust Joel Towers.
We'll be live, we'll be live for this entire rally.
Joel Towers.
Faculty doesn't trust Joel Towers.
Students don't trust Joel Towers.
Students don't trust Joel Towers.
Students, students, student power.
Students, students, student power.
Students, students, student power.
Students, students, student power.
We don't, we don't trust Joel Towers.
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 Students, students, student power.
Students, students, student power.
We don't, we don't trust Joel Towers.
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 They say cut back.
They say cut back.
We say fight back.
We say fight back.
They say cut back.
They say cut back.
We say fight back.
We say fight back.
Cut back.
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 Fight back.
Fight back.
Fight back.
Cut back.
Fight back.
Fight back.
Fight back.
They say cut back.
They say cut back.
We say fight back.
We say fight back.
They say cut back.
They say cut back.
Then we say fight back.
Then we say fight back.
Cutting staffers, that ain't right.
Cutting staffers, that ain't right.
Kessler, why'd you pick this fight?
Kessler, why'd you pick this fight?
Cutting staffers, that ain't right.
Cutting staffers, that ain't right.
Kessler, why'd you pick this fight?
Kessler, why'd you pick this fight?
Cutting staffers, that ain't right.
Cutting staffers, that ain't right.
Kessler, why'd you pick this fight?
Kessler, why'd you pick this fight?
Cutting staffers, that ain't right.
Cutting staffers, that ain't right.
Kessler, why'd you pick this fight?
Kessler, why'd you pick this fight?
Took my teacher, it was wrong.
Took my teacher, it was wrong.
Had to put it in a song.
Had to put it in a song.
Took my teachers, it was wrong.
Took my teachers, it was wrong.
Put it in a fight back song.
Put it in a fight back song.
Cut my teachers, that was sad.
Cut my teachers, that was sad.
I told my students, damn I'm mad.
I told my students, damn I'm mad.
They cut my teachers, shit was sad.
What's up, y'all? A U P T V.
Cut my teachers, shit was sad.
We're here at the New School. I'm Chenjerah from Manuka, a National A U P Council member, also representative of N Y U's A U P. And as you can see, people are out here, um, they're pissed. And we're gonna hear shortly from speakers, staff, students, contingent faculty, tenure faculty, people from multiple universities, all out here, speaking against these cuts by the New School and their invitations, and really, uh, just step towards trying to end tenure. So we're gonna speak about that. The speeches are coming up shortly, so stay tuned, we're gonna stream this whole round. A U P T V, y'all.
Our school.
Say who's school?
Our school.
Who's teacher?
Our teacher.
Who's teacher?
Our teacher.
Who's student?
Our student.
Who's student?
Our student.
Who's program?
Our program.
Who's program?
Our program.
Who's funding?
Our funding.
Who's funding?
Our funding.
Know who's school?
Our school.
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 Dick and Joel, you're no good.
Dick and Joel, you're no good.
Treat your students like you should.
Treat your students like you should.
Dick and Joel, you're no good.
Dick and Joel, you're no good.
Treat your students like you should.
Treat your students like you should.
What do we want?
Stop the cuts.
What do we want?
Now!
Say what do we want?
Stop the cuts.
What do we want?
Now!
If we don't get it.
Shut it down.
If we don't get it.
Shut it down.
If we don't get it.
Shut it down.
If students don't get it.
Shut it down.
If teachers don't get it.
Shut it down.
If our school doesn't get it.
Shut it down.
Hey!
Shut it down. Shut it down.
What?
Shut it down.
What?
Shut it down.
What?
Shut it down.
Hey!
Shut it down. 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 Shut it down.
What?
Shut it down. 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 Shut it down.
Ya, 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 wait. Look at me, I'm Joel Towers, I'm Joel Towers. These classes way too good, you need to cut it.
These classes.
These teachers way too good, you need to cut it.
These teachers way too good, you need to cut it.
These classes way too good, you need to cut it.
No! These classes way too good, you need to cut it.
Hey, we are the New School.
Two, a little bit louder, three. We're out here fighting.
For our future, one. We are the New School, two. A little bit louder, three. We're out here fighting for our future, one. We are the New School, two. A little bit louder, three. We're out here fighting for our future, one. We are the New School, two. A little bit louder, three. We're out here fighting for our future, one. We are the New School, two. A little bit louder, three. We're out here fighting for our future, one. We are the New School, two. A little bit louder, three. We're out here fighting for our future. We are the New School, two. A little bit louder, three. We're out here fighting for our future.
Are you getting any rest?
We are the New School, two.
A little bit.
A little bit louder, three. We're out here fighting for our future, one. We are the New School, two. A little bit louder, three. We're out here fighting for our future, one. We are the New School, two. A little bit louder, three. We're out here fighting for our future, one. We are the New School, two. A little bit louder, three. We're out here fighting for our future, one. We are the New School, two. A little bit louder, three. We're out here fighting for our future.
Short on money, high on power.
Short on money, high on power.
We don't trust Joel Towers.
We don't trust Joel Towers.
Short on money, high on power.
Short on money, high on power.
We don't trust Joel Towers.
We don't trust Joel Towers.
Short on money, high on power.
Short on money, high on power.
We don't trust Joel Towers.
We don't trust Joel Towers.
Short on money, high on power.
Short on money, high on power.
Bank doesn't trust Joel Towers.
Bank doesn't trust Joel Towers.
Bank doesn't trust Joel Towers.
Parsons doesn't trust Joel Towers.
N S R doesn't trust Joel Towers.
N S R doesn't trust Joel Towers.
Copa doesn't trust Joel Towers.
Copa doesn't trust Joel Towers.
Short on money, high on power.
Short on money, high on power.
We don't trust Joel Towers.
We don't trust Joel Towers.
Short on money, high on power.
Short on money, high on power.
Fight, fight, fight Joel Towers.
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 Fight, fight, fight Joel Towers. Fight, fight, fight Joel Towers.
Okay. Everybody's coming to the school to cheer us. And now we're gonna have our rally here.
You're in love with the party. You're in the party, you are going to the party.
You have to go.
You have to.
I have to go sign over, right?
You're gonna do that.
Oh, we're.
Fuck the administration!
Sorry. Excuse me. So many incredibly talented artists, writers, thinkers. And we're so lucky to have, and colleagues, and teachers. And those people are at risk of losing their job, and losing their job at the very last minute, as classes are also canceled at the very last minute, which causes mass confusion for students. Um, and all of this is totally and utterly unacceptable. This is also affecting staff. Staff are also being affected, they are so overworked to begin with. All of the staff that we lost, uh, right at the beginning of the pandemic, that those positions were never refilled. The staff at our department are so overworked, they cannot take on extra work. We need these people for the university to function. And all of. And all of this is due to, like, incredibly bad financial mismanagement. If I was that bad at my job, I would have been fired.
Really?
But instead, people fail us. Um, but, um, the other thing that people are saying is that this is somehow just a financial crisis. This is clearly not a financial crisis, this is an ideological targeting of social justice. The cops are primarily coming to people in humanities and the social sciences across the school, and, and we are here, and all of us are here, and we are so excited to be at a school that is the only accredited school by the Carnegie Institution that actually has both a world-renowned arts and design school and a research two university. There is no other school like this in the entirety of. But if we got one half of it, we are losing the fundamental, like, mission of the New School. There is no point in having this school if we don't have these two parts integrated. We need the justice. Okay, that's it, thanks. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you, Heather.
Um, I'm here to introduce the next speaker. Um, but I can introduce myself first, I'm Danielle. I'm here, uh, I'm a PhD student, uh, in the department. I'm also a S E N S worker, shout out U A W. And our next speaker is a S E N S comrade of mine, um, Matt. So he's gonna speak a little bit about the student-worker side. Thank you.
Danielle, really loud, because we can't hear you.
Yeah, I'm pretty loud.
Okay. I thought we could hear you without it, but, yeah, I know, right?
All right, hi, guys, how are y'all?
Yeah!
All right, so, uh, I just wanna be clear about one thing. We are not petulant children crying about the administration taking away our toys. We, but this is the narrative that Joel was trying to sell us. We understand, although we reject the logic of crisis and austerity, we understand that maybe change needs to happen here. But we come to the New School for social research because it is the place where change can be theorized, where change can be lived, where we take an active role in participating in our communities and elaborating the conditions under which those communities can exist. This is quite simply who we are. This is why we love this place, this is why we love our communities. And this is what Joel Towers, Richard Kessler, and Franzen Ada do not understand about the New School. The so-called restructurings that they have, uh, set us on path forth is openly flouting the progressive ethos that the New School was founded upon, and their mode of leadership threatens to send this school into a death spiral. But let me just give you a little glimpse into what it's like being a graduate student, being a graduate student worker right now at the New School. So, the first thing is, uh, when they cut our PhD programs, when they put them on indefinite pause, they did so without consulting our department chairs, without consulting our faculty, and without consulting us. And when we told them, when our master students told them that this would have a detrimental effect on graduate education at the New School, how did they respond? They didn't. And when our board of trustees, who understood what we stood for, put money on the table in order to keep those programs running, what did Joel Towers do?
No.
He said no. Claims to be in a situation of financial deficit, and yet he left millions of dollars on the table. And then, when they announced that our faculty was gonna be cut, more than forty percent of full-time faculty across the New School, and we asked them, how is it that we are gonna continue to be able to complete our degrees when our faculty have been voluntarily separated from us? How are we going to be able to have supervisors for our dissertations? How people are gonna teach the classes that we need to graduate? What did they say? Nothing! Joel Towers told us that he had a plan to put together a committee to start putting together a plan for what our education would look like. Like Donald Trump, Joel Towers has only the concept of a plan. No real plan. And what happened? When our colleagues over at S P E, or at E P S M, at the Environmental Policy and Sustainable Management, the Graduate Program for International Affairs, in the Master Program for Urban and Public Policy Areas of Research, that Joel Towers, time and time again, said he supported, what did he tell them?
Lies.
Lies, tuck something luck, is what he told them. Said that they could complete their degrees even while at the same time getting rid of the faculty and the external partnerships that were needed for their education to be fulfilling and to be rewarded. All right, so, I'm being told I gotta wrap it up. Uh, I'm a philosophy student, being promoted comes with the territory. But I think we just need to all remember that when Joel Towers, Richard Kessler, Franzen Ada come for the New School, they don't understand that we are organized, they don't understand that we talk to each other, they don't understand what it is that we do. And so we are gonna keep fighting back, because our resistance is our way of getting through. And we'll see him in Berkeley.
Thank you so much, Matthew, that was amazing. Um, next up, we have the incredible Emily Lee from University of.
Hi, everybody, my name is Emily, I'm a PhD student. Okay, okay, guys, I'm good. I'm a fifth-year student here at Parsons at Lang. I've been probably organizing for most of the time that I've been at this university, and also maybe knowing my degree. I wanna explain a little bit about today, I woke up, um, I went to my exam, I sat with my teacher, and she started crying because she got hired two months ago on tenure track, and she doesn't know if she has a livelihood in the next couple months. There's something that's so beautiful about this community and what I see us do, I remember the first night of the twenty twenty-two, or twenty-one, I forget, because I'm totally straight, and the energy that came from that, and that first night in which we were all dancing, and I sit there and think, I think we could fucking do it again. I kind of came here originally for the Parsons degree, I thought it would get me more money. Um, and now I kind of am leaving, like, wow, this Lang degree taught me so much. I want you guys to look around to recognize your neighbors, if you're undergrad, if you're about to graduate next semester, it doesn't matter, we have the capacity for change within our workplaces, beyond that, there are things that we can do, there are people that we can talk to, we don't give up because we are the New School and we fight.
Thank you, Emily. Also, a little tidbit, not to embarrass you, but Emily was like the first organizer I ever remember from the New School, hard time, I will be straight. Part-time COVID strike. They've been on the street. Alright, so next we have Raha from part-time faculty.
My name is Raha, I'm part-time faculty, I work at Lang in the program of Religious Studies. And I want to make sure we all understand this is not about or just about a $50 million budget deficit. This is about a crisis of mismanagement. The New School administration, instead of doing their job, have decided that the New School community of faculty and students are the ones that are expendable. If they magically got a $50 million donation tomorrow, our conditions would not change. They would not give us their classes back, they will not give us our programs back. Why? How do we know this? Because this budget deficit is not new. They've known this, instead of asking faculty, students to help them through this, they paid millions of dollars to an outside consulting firm. No input from faculty and students, not even pretending to ask part-time faculty who teach for over 85% of the faculty at the New School. The president's office has also refused millions of dollars to fund the PhDs at the New School for Social Research. The reason the New School has its name. This deficit has been weaponized. They can't, the admin can't even tell for salaries at $200,000. Instead, they ask us to give up our jobs, our retirement benefits, and our salaries. This is a private equity-style takeover in which the quality of education is an afterthought and is driven only by profit. This is less than disrespect, this is contempt. We're in one of the most invasive and aggressive forms of restructuring. They want to make an example out of us. To the point where soon there will be no university for the board of trustees to be on the board of. But now we have a real opportunity to push back. They cannot steamroll us, they will be held to account. What's happening here is not just about the New School. It's not even about universities in general. It's about every aspect of our lives. We are living through private equity and government breaking down our institutions of education, news broadcasts, and health, welfare, food, housing. Here we can show them, this stops, this stops now. They withheld information from us until the last minute so that we'd all think we were alone in this. They know we are stronger together, that is the only thing they care. This is not their school, this is our school. Whose school?
Our school!
Whose school?
Our school!
Whose school?
Our school!
They'll make $700,000, by the way.
They'll miss $600,000.
Amazing. Thank you so, so much, Raha, and thanks for the shout-out and salary.
We appreciate it.
Alright, up next we have PSC CUNY Lynn Turner. Thank you so much for being with us.
Keep shouting, they can hear us from the UC right now!
Hello, everybody. Hello, I'm Lynn Turner, Vice President and a part-time personnel for the PSC CUNY. It represents 30,000 full and part-time faculty, staff, and graduate employees at the City University of New York. I also teach as adjunct faculty in sociology at LaGuardia Community College. That the PSC CUNY stands in solidarity with our siblings. You at the New School, in your fight to preserve the integrity of your historic institution formed over 100 years ago as a university in exile by intellectuals, clean fascism. In this time, at this present day of authoritarian assault on higher education, on free speech, on free assembly, and critical thought, it is literally ironic that the New School administration is acting to summarily lay off 40% of its full-time positions, drastically cut staff positions, freeze doctoral programs, and radically diminish the liberal arts divisions essential to critical thinking, which in turn will also mean cuts on part-time faculty. These actions only serve to bolster those that are waging these authoritarian assaults on higher education. And we stand with you to demand no cuts to faculty, to staff, and programs. Instead, cut administrative bloat and consider the real estate portfolio as well. To stand with you, our New School staff colleagues, to say that you are not alone and that your fight is our fight. Solidarity forever because the workers and our unions together are strong.
Thank you, Lynn. We have one more speaker, Chenjerai from NYU.
When we fight?
We win!
When we fight?
We win!
When we fight?
We win!
Whose school?
Our school!
Whose school?
Our school!
Greetings, everyone, my name is Chenjerai Kumanyika, and I represent NYU's AAUP, I bring solidarity. But I also represent the National Council of AAUP, and I come on behalf of our executive leadership team from National AAUP. And I got a few things to say. Number one, we want to express how inspired we are by the organizing that has been going on. What that organizing shows is that these administrators don't have the vision for higher education. They don't have the policy for higher education. The second thing I want to say is that I know some people gotta be careful what they say. These conditions of insecurity have created that, but I'm gonna speak the truth right now. We know that neoliberalism always tries to make a political fight look like an economic fight, am I right? We see what you're trying to do. You want to gut our universities, and we not going for it. The next thing I want to say is this, this is a national fight. Within the last week, I myself was down at UBA, where UBA held incredible actions and had to march on the border to speed. On the same day, the University of Nebraska had to march on their border regions. And of course, we gotta talk about what's going on in New York, y'all. I see what they're counting on is that they think we're alone, that we're gonna be isolated, that it's too cold, that we gonna be worried about rain. But you know what? Once, you know, NYU, my colleague Zach Simlin pointed something out. Our chief financial officer, the consulting firm Huron, is the same consulting firm trying to gut the New School and it already started letting in. So you know NYU is in the fight. What happens when PSC gets in the fight? When the PSC alumni get in the fight, now you not a problem. We got community agencies on the fight. When all the people, all the students, all the faculty, all the staff, all the community members join together, now you not a problem anymore. I want to go again to say, we do thank you and we in solidarity with you, thank you very much.
Are you ready to fight? Are you ready to fight? Are you ready to fight? Okay, okay, okay. We're gonna go back to picking it. So, I'm gonna need also like, okay. Spread out really far now, so do the opposite of what I told you to do before. Please don't go in the street.
Thank you so much for coming this week. You're such an amazing speaker, also I love your podcast.
Thank you, no, y'all, it's so good, you got people out there, it's not all, this time it's a mess.
It's like, it's not, it's like...
I want to shout out my class for showing up at the event, thank you. Okay, if you have a chance, please pick it out. It is yellow, horse, pink, or white. Pick it out, we're gonna sing a song. And you are gonna need to share with your neighbor because we did not know there were gonna be so many people out here today. Everybody, take a chance, everybody hold them up. Hold them up, take it out of your pocket, unfold them. Because you are going to have to read, which I know is something we all know how to do really well here. Okay. Alright, everybody have a chance, shee. Everybody have a neighbor. Yeah, okay, now, Ben Wa is gonna hold the mic, he's better than I think. Alright, on the back of the chance sheet, you have a song. To the tune of "That's the Hell." Everybody knows this song, right? If you don't know, it's "Follow Your Neighbor," okay.
Chenjerai.
You're here.
Oh, hey, Michael, how you doing?
A great seat.
Thank you.
So, what do you have to do is you have to have a statement that's supportive of the high schools. You want to get other chapters around the city to go try with us. Can I send it to you, but can I send it to you? Can you send it to me? Send it to you this evening, yeah.
Do you already have one?
I don't know. I don't have anything with me, I don't have a pen, paper, or anything. Why don't I just tie you on your official, how about you? So I'll get you high, I'll tap you down and leave you back. You know what it'd be so nice, you might know the people.
Say one! We are the New School Two! A little bit louder Three! We're out here fighting for our future! One! We are the New School Two! A little bit louder Three! We're out here fighting for our future! We are the New School Two! A little bit louder Three! We're out here fighting for our future! One! We are the New School Two! A little bit louder Three! We're out here fighting for our future! One! We are the New School Two! A little bit louder Three! We're out here fighting for our future! We are the New School Two! A little bit louder Three! We're out here fighting for our future! Shut it down!
I'm cutting the line.
Shut it down!
Thank you so much.
Shut it down! 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 When education's on the line? Education's on the line! We will never step aside! We will never step aside! When education's on the line? Education's on the line! We will never step aside! We will never step aside! When education's on the line? Education's on the line! We will never step aside! We will never step aside! When education's on the line? Education's on the line! We will never step aside! We will never step aside! When our teachers went on strike? When our teachers went on strike? We never stepped aside! We never stepped aside! When our teachers went on strike? When our teachers went on strike? We never stepped aside! We never stepped aside! When we had to stay the night? When we had to stay the night? We never stepped aside! We never stepped aside! When we had to stay the night? When we had to stay the night? We stood up, stood up and fight! We stood up, stood up and fight! We stand up, stand up to 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 fight! NYU stands up to fight! NYU stands up to fight! CUNY stands up to fight! CUNY stands up to fight! Lang stands up to fight! Lang stands up to fight! Parsons stands up to fight! Parsons stands up to fight! NSAT's hard to fight! NSAT's hard to fight! Mars is hard to fight! Mars is hard to fight! Chilpa stands up to fight! Chilpa stands up to fight! Maryland stands up to fight! Maryland stands up to fight! New School stands up to fight! New School stands up to fight! The New School stands up to fight! New School stands up to fight! The New School stands up to fight! New School stands up to fight! The New School stands up to fight! New School stands up to fight! When our teachers went on strike? When our teachers went on strike? New School stands up to fight! New School stands up to fight! And when we had to stay the night? When we had to stay the night? The New School stands up to fight! 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 Because everywhere we go? Everywhere we go? People wanna know? People wanna know?
People wanna know.
Who we are.
Who we are. So we tell them. We are the new school. The mighty, mighty new school. We are the new school.
The mighty, mighty new school.
Mighty, mighty new school.
Everywhere we go...
Everywhere we go.
People wanna know...
People wanna know.
Who we are.
Who we are.
So we tell them.
So we tell them.
We are the new school.
We are the new school.
The mighty, mighty new school.
Mighty, mighty new school.
If they forget it...
If they forget it.
They will regret it.
They will regret it.
If they forget it...
If they forget it.
They will regret it.
They will regret it.
If they forget it...
If they forget it.
They will regret it.
They will regret it.
When education's on the line... We will never step aside.
We will never step aside.
When education's on the line...
Education's on the line.
We will never step aside.
We will never step aside.
Dual powers step aside.
Dual powers step aside.
Administration step aside.
Administration step aside.
Dual powers step aside.
Dual powers step aside.
Administration step aside.
Administration step aside.
Students are here to fight.
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 When education's on the line...
When education's on the line.
We will never step aside.
We will never step aside.
When education's on the line...
When education's on the line.
We will never step aside.
We will never step aside.
Everywhere we go...
Everywhere we go.
People wanna know...
People wanna know.
Who we are.
Who we are.
So we tell them.
So we tell them.
We are the new school.
We are the new school.
Mighty, mighty new school.
Mighty, mighty new school.
If you fight back...
If you fight back.
We will fight back.
We will fight back.
If you fight back...
If you fight back.
We will fight back.
We will fight back.
If you fight back...
If you fight back.
We will fight back.
We will fight back.
Stop the cuts! 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 Shut it down! 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 Shut it down!
Alright, y'all, let's do some real cheerleading. In the... La 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 la, la 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 la. Broken, they will now be loved. La 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 la, la 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 la. Quarantine separation. La 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 la, la 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 la. To this education. La 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 la, la 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 la. And...
Just like this?
Men grow, men keep their peace. La 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 la, la 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 la. They will sell out all the two years.
I think we... Like a little walk back. And right now, yeah, if you were lit... Yeah, Lorraine asked her to change middle of the way. Yeah, yeah, that would be great. That would possibly be excellent. Here, another person changed out to the east. No, well, she also, yeah. But I think Lorraine, that would be great. Cause she's also passed to you here. But in fact...
Dual powers house tonight, be there, be square. Dual powers house. Dual powers house tonight. We will not be done. We will not rest dual powers house tonight for here. You will hear us. Students and workers unite!
Students and workers unite!
One school, one circle, one fight!
One school, one circle, one fight!
Students and workers unite!
Students and workers unite!
One school, one circle, one fight!
One school, one circle, one fight! Students and workers unite!
One school, one circle, one fight!
One school, one circle, one fight!
Is there like a poll? He might be on what's next.
Students and workers unite!
One, two, one circle, one fight!
One school, one circle, one fight!
Is that NSSR town? Oh, yeah. Are you gonna hand these out? That's it. Have people hand them out. Then I'll tell people to turn around. They need and the variants of...
One school, one circle!
Okay, sounds good. So, all my students, I guess, one. Thank you.
One school, one circle!
I gotta teach. I gotta teach. If you need me, I understand.
No, 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 you're good.
But, but, um... Yeah, cause it's essential, fine. Yeah. I got a prep. Uh, you're sorry. Are you teaching tonight? Okay. My students are presenting. It's my last class, I gotta... But, um, if you need, you know, I'm out of the... Okay.
Stand up for student rights!
NYU is...
NYU is...
Stand up for student rights!
Stand up for student rights!
UNE is...
UNE is...
Stand up for student rights!
Stand up for student rights!
One struggle all together.
One struggle all together.
We are out here in this weather.
We are out here in this weather.
One struggle all together.
One struggle all together.
We are out here in this weather.
We are out here in this weather.
One struggle all together.
One struggle all together.
We are out here in this weather.
We are out here in this weather.
One struggle all together.
One struggle all together.
We'll stay out here in this weather.
We'll stay out here in this weather.
I've given my voice and lost my voice four years straight for this award. And if we're doing it all again...
Alright, next step! Let's say next step!
Next step!
Okay, so tomorrow...
Tomorrow...
Where is it? There is a town hall.
There is a town hall.
At NSSR.
At NSSR.
At 12.
At 12.
I think on the 11th floor.
I think on the 11th floor.
Now you do it right! Evaluations.
Fill out your course evaluation. Fill out your course evaluation. So fill out your course evaluation. Show us how much you value your professors and instructors.
We'll do it one more time. Thank you for coming.
No, no, thank you. Wow, I can't, I need to do it every...
All kinds, all kinds, I'm there.
Yes. Thank you Dee.
And then, um, more information, more events, more actions you can find on the AAUP Instagram, on the Science Instagram, on the Part-Time Faculty Instagram, on the New School Instagram. And Anything I Forgot Instagram. Um, and Dee's Instagram.
I'm crazy now. It's all me now.
Alright, so I will see you all at the next action. We're gonna have as much energy, we're gonna have more people.
We'll be back! 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 We'll be back!
Alright, y'all. We're gonna end the stream. We'll be back.
As you will be, please, even if it's a crosswalk and be mindful of traffic.